Hello, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Monday, August 22nd, 2022, school board meeting. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Walker.
Here.
Inspector Raj.
Here.
Inspector Lalliberty.
Here.
Inspector Aaron.
Here.
Inspector Felton.
Here.
Chair Diaz.
Here.
And Inspector Weber is absent at six, present at six o'clock.
Thank you. All right, please, for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first thing we do in our meetings is approve our meeting agenda and minutes. So I'm looking for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for tonight, as well as the committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes for August 8th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
No word, she just missed her. Thank you. To the left of me, a second. I'll do the second.
Okay, thanks.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, and that motion carries. Thank you. And tonight in Quality in Action, we have all of our building leaders here to provide a highlight to the start of our school year. Welcome to you all. So excited.
So why don't we start with elementary first, not because it's more important? Not because it's more important, but we'll start with, we'll just go in order by age. Maybe we'll let Teresa go because she's ready to jump in and go. Terry? Oh, wonderful, wonderful. So while they're coming up, we just, we had, a lot of times when we have Quality in Action, we bring staff and students in and they weren't here yet. So we wanted to take this opportunity, just let them share some things they're really excited about for the year. So excited to have them here. Thank you for taking the time to be with us.
Yeah, good evening, South St. Paul Board of Education and Dr. Zambreno. Terry and I are super excited to be here tonight because it's kicking off another school year for us. And we're doing this together because we are just really building a partnership between us and our buildings, which I know makes everybody happy and it makes us happy too, so. And we have just spent so much time planning together this summer that we're just like ready to get started. So we both welcome new teachers today. What an exciting thing. We both did a fair amount of hiring, did some of it together. We feel really happy and confident to be able to have new teachers start with us and that we have quality candidates that want to work in South St. Paul, so we're really excited about that. Next week, everyone gets to be back, which is really exciting. And we spent the summer with our built teams, building instructional leadership teams, working on our school improvement goals, which our leader, teacher leaders will be presenting back to their constituents, their staff next week, and we'll be working on those to kind of have their own kickoff plan by grade level by the time kids come. And next Thursday is our Family Connection Day. We're really excited to, I hate to use the word "normal," right? So more typical time where parents and families can be in our buildings. And each of us have really fun things planned for our buildings to welcome families in. Lincoln, we have the apparel lab that's going to be selling things. We're going to have a passport experience. I'm going to be holding some meetings with parents where they can come and meet with me and face-to-face and ask questions. He's going to talk about his in a minute. And we both have building themes that we're really excited about that both, the theme encompasses staff and students. And so ours is the magical yet. It's after a read-alot that I'm going to do in all the classrooms. And it's really about inevitable, difficult learning moments, right? And how do we handle those, right? So we want kids to have perseverance and grit and know that they may not have learned it yet, but that they're going to get there. And so that's really what's going to guide our year and we're just going to all work together and have that journey together. So thank you again.
What was it magical?
The magical yet. But yet's like a thing, right? So yet's going to help you get there.
Right, so I love the first-year teacher to South St. Paul day. And I thought I wowed the crowd today when I had said, we went around and we listened to, some people have been here for five days, some people have been here since last May. I laid on them that I was born on that spot back when it was Divine Redeemer, back in 1970. And I don't think it was awe. I think it was like, oh, like that. Anyways, love this week, love this day. There's so much enthusiasm and energy that we're seeing from our new staff as well. And you know, Teresa had mentioned the work that we've done this August with our built leaders. So I'm really excited for them to lead next week. Unstoppable is our theme, and there are several songs that go with unstoppable. And if you happen to look through, and I know that you read our weekly smore emails in detail, but there is a link of me reading our book to everybody, and that will be a read-alot for our school. So looking forward to that. Unstoppable, our kids have obstacles. We've had a huge obstacle the past couple of years. And if we work hard, if we work together, there's nothing that we can't do. And that's what we want to impart on our kids this year. So we have our Family Connection Day next Thursday as well, from 10 to 6:00. And we have food trucks, everybody loves food, some picture-taking opportunities. We've had Jack Lee, the local artist, come in and do some things, much like she had done at Lincoln. So we're excited for people to see that, some hair and face paintings and a bouncy house. So it's a carnival. Just come on down, okay?
There's lots of clowns at carnival.
Yes, right, exactly. Thank you. So if you're offering, come on down. So, and it's just so fitting that I want to introduce you, a new member of the South St. Paul school community. And as you know, Dan Riley took a job in another district. He had been here for nine years. And Jody Hanson has just been, she's been here for what, five days or four days now, something like that? Enthusiastic, just full of energy and such a people person. She's just, already just lifted us up, just being in the building. So I'd like to introduce Jody Hanson to say hello to you tonight. She can tell you a little about.
Welcome.
Director of Education, Dr. Zambreno, I just want to thank you for the warm welcome in South St. Paul. I've been told that there's another St. Paul district here, but this is South St. Paul. So thank you for welcoming me to South St. Paul. The building has been so warm with your welcome. I bring to you 25 years, so this is my 25th year in education. And I'm so thrilled to be the new Assistant Principal of Capoja. And I look forward to a wonderful year. It's going to be a great match for my skill set. And also I have figured out that I think we're going to be quite the pair as well. So watch out, but thank you for the wonderful welcome and I'm looking forward to a great year.
Yeah, so glad you're here.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Terry, I have a question before you leave. Is that invitation still open that you gave me the last time I saw you?
Always, Bill, always.
Okay, now this is documented.
Yes, well, we'll just keep it between you and I.
Stop any time?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thanks, Terry.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thanks, elementary schools.
Thank you, elementary team.
Back for more. All right, I'm Leah Borg. I'm from the middle school. I'm the principal at the middle school. And at the middle school, we are onboarding 13 new licensed staff and approximately five paraprofessionals and unlicensed staff. We are very excited, as I said earlier, that we have a dream team of staff to work with our students this year. Very, the built team is really excited to bring back four-day-a-week connections, which is like an advisory. And they have been working really hard this summer to make sure that we have that planned out with a purpose. So four days a week, we're going to have our connections class, and that is going to be on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. On Wednesday, we still are going to have those late starts, and so we will not have connections on Wednesdays. And so making sure that families and students know that schedule and make sure that we are ready to have students in connections class and that they understand the purpose and that they feel supported. We also want to make sure, and last year, my staff brought to you the I-Times from BAR. We're going to continue those activities, not just in connections, but also throughout the content areas. The BAR team is bringing some professional development to our staff in two weeks around resiliency and making sure that we help build our students' resiliency and actually our staff's resiliency too. We are looking forward to building around the theme "Better Together" and working around our definition of collaboration. It's, in the past, oftentimes, out of necessity, collaborating has looked like taking a list, dividing it into, and getting it done as quick as possible. We're going to be really looking at how staff and students can work together to make a project and a purpose better when we work together and not just divide and conquer. I had talked a little bit about cellphone pouches and how we're going to make sure that we are focusing on each other and focusing on the work at hand. And we really look forward to expanding all of our academic achievement as well. Our open house, our family connect, is the same as the elementary schools. We are on the same conference schedule and semester schedule as elementary schools. While we are located in the secondary, we do have the same elementary schedule as far as that's concerned. So it will be Thursday, September 1st, from 10 to 6:00.
I love that focus on resiliency. You know, post-pandemic, that was such a struggle for so many students that that's a really appropriate focus this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, school board, Dr. Zambreno, the greater school community. My name is Chuck Ochaki and I'm proud to be the principal of the high school. Just like everyone else, right, super excited about the year to start. And actually, our building came alive last week. It was phenomenal to have kids coming in because athletics and activities have started up. We had pictures last Thursday and again today, and it was just awesome to see kids being excited to be back in school. Like everyone else, our built team has been working on some of our goals and what we want to do to improve. But we also did some self-study and really looked at ourselves and said, the year that we had last year wasn't satisfactory. Wasn't satisfactory for us as staff, for our students. And we've spent all summer on a couple of different committees in which teachers and staff members have been coming in to really look at, how do we change the climate and culture of the high school? That was one of the committees. And then looking at our Packer Plus Win program, how do we strengthen that program for our kids? So I've been super excited, like I feel ready. Like bring the kids on, right, bring the staff on. We're ready to go and excited about the change that we've made, so. I'm sure you have questions for me, but really the question is, hey, who's the new AD AP, right? Is probably the number one question. Maybe not the board, but the school community wants to know. So it is my pleasure to bring Brady up, and he's got a 90-slide presentation?
Ninety slide, about two hours.
Excellent, all right, buckle up.
He fits it already, so this is Brady. Hi there, nice to meet everybody. I'm excited to be here. So I was, started here in July, and it's been, it's been a blast. July was a little slow, though, nobody was in the building. But as Mr. Ochaki said about August, these past couple of weeks have really picked up. And it is super exciting to be out and about, watching our kids at practices as activities and athletics have started, and that started August 15th. So it's been absolutely exciting. You know, as an athletic director and activities director, I actually love the role that high school activities plays in the entire high school experience. It's such an important and pivotal part, you know, it's just an extension of the classroom. There's so many lessons that kids learn through participating in activities that they aren't necessarily going to get in the classroom, so that's been really exciting. Side note, we did pick up our first win today, girls tennis. Academy today, four to three.
I was worried about that, Brady.
So, but activities are off and running. Numbers, we have about 350 kids, just kind of pulled a report today, through 7th through 12th grade that are participating in athletics. We're still kind of seeing some building off the pandemic. We saw numbers decline, and that was pretty much nationwide across the board, but we're coming back. So that's kind of exciting. But this week, we have a full slate of events. I think every sport is starting this week, girls tennis today, girls tennis tomorrow. There's a community event that starts at 5:00. There's a youth night, and then at 5:45, they have like some Packer athletic teams can come play tennis. And then at 7:00, they do an Under the Lights at Roosevelt. They'll have food trucks and kind of a carnival-like atmosphere too, so it'll be exciting. But yeah, so football is the only sport that doesn't have a game this week, so they're next week. But then our show choir is in the building practicing, our dance team is in the building practicing, our theater is gearing up for their fall production. So it's just a really, really exciting time to be back in the building. And again, as Mr. Ochaki says, seeing those kids come in, it just, it just gets you back. So a couple of big things to kind of pay attention to and kind of a focus overall from the State High School League is really a focus on sportsmanship and those kind of behaviors. There's some programs coming down, a collaborative effort amongst the schools and communities around the state of Minnesota to really improve kind of the overall fan and student participation experience. So South St. Paul will be trying to have representation and be a part of that. But other than that, I am super excited to be here. It's been a absolutely wonderful first month and a half. The community has been really welcoming. I just want to give a huge shout-out to some of the organizations within the community already that have been absolutely supportive. I know the Lions Club is supporting everything, the Open Foundation, the Education Foundation, all of those wonderful organizations that you guys have. There's a lot of really good bones here, and so it's a really exciting time to be here. Any questions?
It's been exciting to see you. I've seen you out in the community a lot, so you are jumping in.
We're trying to get out there as much as we can.
Well, welcome.
You know, one of the things that was interesting about Brady when he interviewed, he talked about being student-centered, student-focused, right? And you could talk about it in an interview, but I've watched him, since the kids have started to come into the building, really stop and pay attention and have personal conversations with kids and really student-focused and making sure that our kids are out there. I know he stopped by the soccer team and they actually said he was a cool guy. And then it's my pleasure to introduce Robin Schwab. I actually called her O'Reilly today on the phone, sorry. Robin Schwab, who is the Assistant Principal at the CLC, to kind of talk about your plan for the year.
All right, thank you for having, having me back, for the school board and Dr. Zambreno. Exciting stuff is happening at the CLC. I want to say first and foremost, we do have our Welcome Back Night on Tuesday. It's 4 to 6. We'll have the grill going, gives the chance for families to either come back, get re-centered, connect with our staff, or for the first time, families getting to know what our building and staff is all about. So we're gearing up and looking forward to that, so that's Tuesday, 4 to 6:00. So that's one thing that we're looking at. And then one thing the pandemic did was give us a chance to practice like about 1,000 different schedules, it felt like. And so after tons of trial and error, one thing that we're really excited about was, we always had some kind of way to get some remediation in during the day for our students. But what we've landed on is for this year coming up, our Monday through Thursday is going to be our continuous six, six classes in the connections. And Friday, we would always have set aside for students to get caught up or to do different things, but we've really structured it different this year. So the students will come in and meet with their connections teacher for 45 minutes. And then that first block, because we had four blocks, the first block will go right to credit recovery. So every student will be registered for an additional course. So they will have that immediately after their connections. And then there's three periods for the students to get what they need. So if they need help in a certain area, they get rotated through that. We also have members from the community coming in and from all different types of trades, different careers, doing presentations. So every Friday, there'll be somebody coming in to give a presentation that students can sign up for, just to give exposure, and we'll also bring in different resources. So it truly is all-encompassing for the whole student that day. So they get their connections with their teacher, where they're doing their academic planning, their I-Times, and then they have their credit recovery. They'll have blocks where they can go check in and have different, different resources check in. And our council will run different groups as well. And if the students are all caught up, they can use that time fully for credit recovery and keep loading a different class. So Fridays are pretty flexible, and our last chunk of the day, we're going to continue using that as our service block. So we do a large group activity. We work quite a bit with, with assisted living facilities on each side of us. And we do different things in the community now that we're able to get out and about and connect and really get our students outside of the, the brick walls. So that is truly what we're, we've been hammering out as a staff and trying to get some exciting things on the calendar. And so if you know anybody who is willing to speak to a bunch of students, give us a call because we'll, we'll fit you in on the calendar because it is amazing to have students go there and then they're like, I didn't even know that was a choice or a job. And just to build that network for the students and to build that, that support. So those are just some of the things that we're looking forward to. So Tuesday, the open house or the Welcome Back Night. And then we're welcoming back the rest of our staff next week and really getting the year launched. So, any questions?
Great planning.
This sounds great.
I also think about like compounding the credit recovery during the school year and your rolling enrollment through the summer. You're coming up with some really innovative solutions for our students, and I think that's wonderful.
Thank you.
Sure, Diaz, you know, that's the, what they were presenting. I just want to thank this amazing group of leaders. I mean, it has been a very busy summer with staffing and just a lot of change happening in the profession. And they're trying to come off of the pandemic brain and be, hear this positive, proactive, you know, future orientation for their buildings. And it's a pleasure to get to work with this team and just want to thank them for, for all their work they're doing.
Yeah, and I love all the skills. I mean, you can see those building future citizens, right? These adults, productive adults in, in all of your themes. So thank you. Thank you for building great, great communities.
I can, I should just speak for you, everybody, but I can really feel your energy. I can, I can feel the positive, and it's like, oh, I, I, God, put me in, Coach.
Right, let's go.
I'm ready, I'm ready to go back in the classroom. No, but really, it just, you can just feel it, and it's really, it's very exciting. So thanks so much for all of your hard work.
Indeed, just keep out of your way.
Doing the best we can for the kids of SSP.
Absolutely. It's going to be a great year.
Yes, keep us updated, and if and when you need anything for your buildings or what, you know, always reach out to us because we're here for you.
And keep taking great pictures because when Dr. Zambreno does the highlights, like we're, we're stuck to our screens, so.
And I know they're all very busy planning for the year, so we're going to excuse them so they can get back to what they need to get to.
Thank you for being here.
We know you probably have already had late nights already.
Have a good holiday.
All right, moving on to our public listening session submissions. That always trips me up every time, and there were none this week. So we can move on to Vice Chair Raj's report on what we talked about in our community, committee of the whole meeting.
So committee of the whole meetings occur prior to our regular school board meeting. That is frequently when the board receives an education about information going on in the schools or when we do a lot of the work that is being a school board member. Today, we spent a lot of that time talking about sort of the divisive nature of cellphones in the schools and the problems that that can occur. So Principal Board gave us an update on, first, you know what a problem cellphones can be with kids. And then two, what we're going to try this year utilizing the yonder pouches. And I know we, we've heard kind of a wide variety of opinions on that, but honestly, it's something that we are just trying as a district as we try to also make our students better students. And so it is something that we are encouraging and excited to see what changes occur and data is being pulled on that. We also talked about the fact that we have many people running for school board this time around. And so we have elections in November, and so with the wealth of candidates we have, we had some initial conversations about how we also give information about those who are running for the school board out to you as a public. And so the first place that I'm going to point you to is on our school's website. If you go to our section for, for the school board, candidates have now been given some basic information to fill out and report back to us. That is due this Friday, so if you give us, you know, maybe two weeks or so, you should see some information populating there. And then there's some additional conversations that is going around about how we can bring candidates in front of the public and educate folks. That's also where we get some updates from the various committees we sit on. And I just want to highlight one of Wendy's statements, but I think one of the things that's really special inside of our district is the Educational Foundation that sits outside of our school entity. And the remarkable work that they do and the amount of money that they raise for our graduating seniors, they are working hard to send off checks to students who are starting school this fall. And that is a huge, huge undertaking, and our students are, receive such benefits from the hard work that they do. So I want to highlight that and know that so many of our graduates are out in the world and a little better off for having been here, so.
And one of your own as well.
That is not easy stuff, so.
All right, thanks for that report, and we move on to Dr. Zambreno.
All right, well, thank you, Chair Diaz. Always fun to talk about things going on in the district. And as Vice Chair Raj mentioned, one of the big topics is having 22 people interested in our four seats on the board. So great to see that excitement and enthusiasm, the interest in our schools. And had some reach out to me and just really have good intentions on how they can jump in and serve the community. So I'm excited about that. As a reminder, the election is on November 8th. And as John mentioned, we'll list candidate information on the website. So as we get that information back in and any other, if there's forums or things that come up, we'll, we'll make sure our website is up to date so folks can always hop there to find out the latest on that. As well, on our website, and again, I'll just acknowledge our team that's been working on our website. It looks great. The new rollout has gone pretty well considering, I think sometimes forget how small a district like ours is, so to update a website. We don't have a webmaster like everybody else or a whole, a whole team. It's another, it's her and Danette and with some IT support from Paul, I think I saw him earlier. So it's a lot of work in a district our size to maintain a website, and ours is phenomenal. I saw that even before I came into the job. It was just a great source of information. And parents can go there, parents' guardians can find information for their current school year, school supply lists, information handbooks, so they know procedures and policies at the buildings, transportation information, or just any kind of technical support. So please take advantage of that website to get to information you need. This is going to probably be a standing item for a while, just making sure, raising awareness around the applications for educational benefits. So again, during the pandemic, the federal government jumped in and, and supported free lunches for all students. So free breakfast, free lunch regardless of home income. That has now sunset, so we do need our families, as always, we need them to because there's funding that we get through compensatory education dollars that supports our students in the classroom. But we definitely don't want kids who qualify for free or reduced-priced lunch to not have that qualification in place. So trying to make that as easy and accessible as I can. I know being at the open houses, the schools have stations and information set up, and our nutrition services team has been onsite helping with that. But definitely can go to school cafe account, and that's listed on our website. So at our website forward slash nutrition, download print applications, fill it out right there. We definitely are eager to support families if they need help with that. Again, there's benefits in terms of lunch, but it can also help students get access to activities, athletics, and other things at a reduced cost. I have their phone number there, 457-9429, if you need support. Another wonderful opportunity in our, in our small and tightly-knit community, there is a community health fair happening tomorrow from 4 to 6:00 at Central Square Community Center. It's free and open to the public. It's a back-to-school immunization opportunity, still opportunities to get the COVID vaccine, so that is accessible again to all community members tomorrow from 4 to 6:00 at Central Square. And it came up a few times in, in folks talking today. We had the new teacher kickoff today. What a fun and energetic bunch. I mean, we talked about the excitement and enthusiasm our, our principals and other administrators shared tonight, and it is palpable as well with our teachers. We had about 35 new teachers there today, and they come with a wide range of experience. Some new to the profession, some with a wealth of experience. So they're, they're energized, they're excited. Dr. Schmidt and his assistant director, Leslie Gomes, did a great job of kicking that off with them. And we got to do a bus tour, and Mayor Francis hosted a bus tour. We hopped on the big yellow bus and drove around town and checked out all the important landmarks. So getting them acclimated, I don't know if we have a term yet, Packerizing, maybe something we got to come up with. Yeah, so they're on their way. One's a Packer, always a Packers, we all know. And then we did hear a little bit about the schools just firing up and getting their, their back to school. So kids were at the secondary building the other day, so getting their pictures taken, getting photos, schedules. And so we're up and running. It's, it's starting to feel real here, and can't wait to get the kids fully back in school. As always, we have opportunities to follow us on social media. And then important dates there with the back-to-school rollouts, kind of a rolling start date. So you can kind of read the, I won't read it all. Again, I've done that a few times. But looking forward to by September 8th, just about everybody back. And then September 12th, our preschoolers. So it's coming right around the corner. As always, our meeting materials for the board are on the website, and you can access those anytime. And you can also watch past videos as well as reviewing agendas and minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All good stuff. And like Nikki said, really great energy in the room. Wherever we're going, in, in any of the buildings, we did introduction. All your papers signed last week at the high school, and you should have just heard like the buzz. This is all the kids who are so excited to be there and all the name, you know, like, Franny, George, Leo, you know, they're screaming each other's name from lines, and yeah, the kids are excited. I know that, I know they'll say that they- I know that, I know they'll say that they don't wanna come back to school.
Oh, they're excited, they're excited.
Yeah, they love it. Um, so moving on to our consent agenda items, and, uh, just a reminder to the public that consent agenda items, um, are things that come through each meeting that we don't need to talk much about, um, things like bills payable, claims, and our staffing report. Sue, do you have a motion for the approval of our consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Great, thanks. Any discussion? And all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries, um, and we do not have any policies up for review this meeting. So, moving on to the business items. And the first thing up is a resolution. And it's a resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election. Uh, do I have a motion to move this resolution for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Um, board members, any discussion? Dr. Zambrino, I think you would, I love what you said earlier.
Yeah, this is, um, just that technical piece that will allow us to do the, check off the, the technical steps to get our, our twenty-two interested, um, prospective board members on the ballot. There's, uh, definitely some more steps than just filing, and so, once this resolution moves forward, we're able to work with the county and get all those pieces in place, so.
On the four-page ballot?
It's gonna be a long one this year.
Yes. Um, great, thank you for that. Um, Elise, will you please call a roll?
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Raj?
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Chair Diaz?
Yes.
At sixty-eight.
Great. And then, um, second business item is related to revoking the existing referendum revenue authorization of the school district, and approving the new authorizations, and calling a special election thereon. Do I have a motion, um, to move this resolution for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Great, thanks. Um, board members, any discussion? And since we don't, we have been talking about it for months. Um, Brady Hoffman, Finance Director, is here to give us a presentation.
Good evening.
Kinda pull it all together, right?
Yes, gonna kinda walk through, uh, kinda the work that's been done here for the last several months, um, paint a little picture of our, the reality that we're facing, and, and, um, kinda what this, uh, levy resolution means, uh, for our students in the community. Um, so where we, or why we are where we are, um, part of this is called the funding gap. Just kinda waiting for the PowerPoint to kick, and I'm not sure if people can see that, there we go. Um, so the funding gap, so since two thousand and three, basic state education aid, that's our main, um, funding from the state, has not kept pace with inflation. So, if we look back on this chart, back in two thousand and three, we were receiving just under five thousand dollars per student. The bottom maroon line is what's actually taken place from then until now, so we're now at six thousand eight sixty-three per student. If the state had just kept pace with inflation on these increases, we'd be up at seven thousand seventy-nine per student. So, this gap has been growing, and has been in place for years. Um, so just looking, if we took that nine twenty-six, so that's the gap, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars per student, that means almost two point, just under three million dollars of revenue for South St. Paul, if we were funded at the inflation rate. So, that's a significant month that's grown over time. This is a piece that, um, all education organizations are aware of, so at the Capitol, this is a piece that's lobbied year over year. You know, attach the foreign to inflation, because we continue to fall behind. Um, so this is a piece that's, um, talked about, discussed heavily, uh, but it's a reality that we're facing. We don't get to control what this revenue amount is, we have to figure out how to live within that. So, to narrow this ga- gap, most Minnesota school districts, including South St. Paul, reply on voter, rely upon voter-approved funds to support student learning. So, this is a piece that we've talked about throughout the process. Um, our operating levy is well below the metro average. So, our operating levy is currently five hundred and eighty-three dollars per student below the metro average. So, when we look at all the metro districts and what they have for voter-approved, we're ranked thirty-fourth out of forty-two. Most districts in the metro also have their levies attached to inflation, which we do as well. So, the state determines what that inflation factor is, and then applies that to our levy amount. Uh, but when we're towards the bottom, the higher districts getting the same percent, that just, that gap is gonna grow. So, they're gonna get a larger increase than we are, so we continue to fall further and further behind as inflation is applied year over year. Less levy funding means South St. Paul schools has less money to support students, staff, and programming. Over the years, we've been financially prudent. We've done everything we can to be resourceful in creating partnerships. We have our tri-district career and college readiness programming, so we're looking for other ways to continue to find opportunities for our students, um, while living within the financial resources that we have. We're creative in making budget adjustments, we're always looking for efficiencies, we're always looking at our programming, um, to make sure we're doing these things the best we can. We're looking for other sources of revenue when possible, such as other post-employment benefits funding. So, we have, um, funds that now fund post-employment health benefits that before weren't covered. So, we're doing things to try and be as resourceful as we can, um, and being mindful that, you know, there's a, a threshold with financial capacity with our taxpayers. So, that brings us to our financial cliff. So, without an operating levy, this inadequate state funding, coupled with the end of our COVID funding, means we're facing a two-point-seven-million-dollar shortfall in two years. So, the funding from the state isn't keeping pace with inflation. You also roll in, uh, special ed cross-subsidy, English learner cross-subsidy, so services required to provide, but there isn't adequate funding to back it up. Um, it just rolls together to say, we're coming up short year over year, and with everything else staying the same, we're still facing reductions. Then with COVID, we receive significant federal dollars. So, some of these dollars are very broad use, and some of them have been very narrow in scope. So, some of them are geared towards PP&amp;E, and, um, you know, kinda those pieces for a building. Some of them are dedicated towards technology uses, others are very broad in maintain your staffing, right? And that's a big piece of what we've been using these dollars for, is to maintain our staffing as we've had, the class sizes we've had, the supports that we've had. So, without the COVID funding, we'd already be really digging into, how are we gonna solve this deficit? So, the proposal, so over the, this last budget cycle, we've had more conversation as a school board, um, and work sessions, talking about, here's our budget projection, here's the reality we're facing, here's how we stack up. And through those conversations, is as, it's more often to say, so now, what do we do next? You know, the state does have a budget surplus, but they're not acting on it, they're not doing anything with it, and we're, as, as an administration, we don't wanna sit back and wait and say, well, I hope something happens. Um, so we engaged our community through a community survey to see what they were interested in. So, through this process, the, the community was supportive of, uh, an increase to our funding, knowing it's gonna go to things such as mental health supports and academic supports for our students. It's gonna go towards expanded career and college readiness opportunities. It would be looking at things like expanding the arts, like, there was interest from our community in that survey to say, yes, we would support this, we wanna invest in our students and in our, in their schools. So, through the budget process and these community surveys, we looked at, once again, where we stacked levy-wise, which, um, the conversation with the board took us to where we have these recommendations, um, this evening. So, the first question is to increase our operating levy by nine hundred dollars per student. So, that would be revoking seven hundred and ninety-two dollars of our current authority, and replacing that with one thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars. That would be for a ten-year in, uh, timeframe, and that would be attached to inflation. These additional funds would allow us to maintain the small class sizes that we have, we're currently among the smallest in the metro. We would be able to preserve our existing programs and services, and then avoid those potentially devastating cuts, um, that would be necessary if we don't have this funding to support those positions and programs. Question number two, so, um, question number two is only a viable question if question one passes. So, the second question is to ask the members of our community to support an additional two fifty, in addition to the nine hundred dollars. Um, and this would allow us to support in the much, uh, invest in the much-needed academic and mental health supports of our students. So, we heard that in the community survey. Superintendent Zambrino also heard that through his ninety-day entry plan throughout the system as a, a desired, um, need. We would also be able to expand performing arts opportunities for students, and increase career and college readiness opportunities for students. But if that additional two hundred and fifty dollars passes as well, this is, um, how some of those funds could be used. So, once again, question one must pass in order for question two to be able to pass. So, what does that mean for our local homeowners? Um, we've worked with our financial advisors to get the tax impact calculations done, as far as what would this cost, the typical home. Um, so the average home in South St. Paul is about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, if question one were to pass, that would be an increase of twenty-nine dollars a month, or just under a dollar a day. If the second question were to pass, that's eight dollars a month, for a combined thirty-seven dollars a month. You can see the hundred and fifty-dollar value there at the top would be seventeen for question one, five for question two, for a total of twenty-two. And then, towards the other end, um, a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home would be a forty-three-dollar increase for question one, and twelve dollars for question two. Thing with a levy like this is every single dollar will go back into our schools to support our students and our staff. So, all of this increase comes right back to the school districts, the schools of South St. Paul. So, if question one fails, that's where we'd have these significant financial repercussions. There would be reductions in educational programming, there would be reductions in staff, our class sizes would increase, and we'd have less academic and mental health supports for our students. If question one passes, but question two fails, we would avoid those significant repercussions, so we'd be able to maintain the programming that we have, but we wouldn't have the ability to invest in the much-needed academic and mental health supports. We wouldn't have the ability to expand on some of our performing arts programming, or increase our college and career readiness opportunities. So, community information can be found in a few different ways. Um, we're gonna be holding community information meetings, those dates are yet to be set. We also will be sending out informational brochures and mailers, and then we also will have a, a page on our website dedicated towards, um, the levy information, these questions, and that is listed here on this slide. It's www.sspps.org/levy2022. So, that is a quick overview of a lot of hours and a lot of time that this group here has spent discussing and reviewing and, um, considering options. Um, so that's a quick high level, so I'll turn it over to the board members to see if you have any questions for us to address, or if Superintendent Zambrino has any additional comments he'd like to make as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'll just say, you know, this is not something any of us enter into lightly. We take, you know, great, um, responsibility in being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. Um, you know, coming in, you all interviewed me and, and gave me a question, what does that look like? And, you know, we, I was like, wow, are we going this fall? And it was like, no, we're, we're not necessarily gonna do that, but when I, uh, got out into the community and heard the, the priorities of the community that it really are for the kids, um, making sure that their needs are met academically, knowing that there's been, you know, pretty significant impact of the pandemic, um, knowing that there's a, a desire to expand, you know, hands-on learning career pathways, um, hopefully being able to get more opportunity to earn post-secondary college credits for those who want, you know, there's just a number of things that we wanna do, and then, uh, became pretty clear to me just how dire our financial situation is. I, um, and the district is, is, as Brady mentioned, been remarkable in, um, doing everything to put the, the dollars in the classroom and keep class size small, and offer a wide variety of programs. Uh, but it just became clear to me that that's gonna be very difficult, if not impossible, in some cases. Um, we shut, we debated, do you put a dollar, like, a number of people to that dollar amount? Um, and I don't want anyone to think it's what we would be, but just to put it into classroom teachers, a two-point-seven-million-dollar shortfall would be about thirty-four teachers, and we only have four schools. Um, and so, you know, my, my piece was, as I brought to you all, like, we probably should have this conversation sooner than later, so we can, uh, hopefully get out in front of this. And the district has been advocating for equalization, uh, which is a technical term, but would help us out, uh, quite a bit. We'll continue to push on those things, we'll be proactive. Brady mentioned, the cross-subsidy is something where it's the underfunding of services for special education and English learners. And for those who didn't track my background, understandable why, but I was a special education teacher, and I taught new-to-country students English, they deserve those services, but those are unfunded mandates, so we will always fund them, but the state is not funding them at the level we'd like, and so, we'll continue to champion those causes. But hope is not a plan, we've been hoping the legislature will act on equalization. We've been hoping the legislature would act on the cross-subsidy, the, the basic formula allowance, it just isn't, it hasn't been happening. And so, communities are having to turn within, and so, you saw that last slide that said Packer pride, Packer promise. We thought, you know, that's a great way to sum up what we're hoping to do here, and our promise is to be good stewards of those dollars if, if the community gets behind that, if, first, of course, if you all decide to approve the, the proposal. And we're happy to answer questions, of course, too.
Thank you. I, I think, too, what, what we want the community to know is that this isn't something that, you know, as we talked about last week, and we're bringing forth today. It has been months and months of, um, discussions, you know, uh, Brady really bringing projections for, like, the, look what's gonna happen. We, we, we need to have a plan. Um, and we've thought about other things, you know, and I just think about, um, your comment to, uh, Principal Board about it really being creative with her solutions. And I think that we have, we have asked our administration and our teachers, our students, our families, to really try to be creative with what we have, and we don't have much. Um, and our kids deserve just as much opportunity, um, than, than, and I don't wanna pinpoint any other district, but than the folks, you know, in, in the west districts, like, we deserve, we deserve too. Um, our kids are important, just as important. So, it, I think, knowing that big picture has helped us move along this journey, um, to get here. It was really difficult, um, bringing in fresh eyes, you know, to come in and go, wow, what, how, how? How have you been living like this? Um, I think it's really helped us see that we can't continue on this way. So, it has been something we've been thinking about. Uh, Monica Weber, uh, the seventh board member, is not here tonight, but she has been.
Passionate about it.
She's so passionate, she is, um, part of the, the AMSD, um, which, I, I don't know what those, that acronym is.
Association of Metropolitan School Districts.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, and, and talks, um, about legis- legislation a lot, um, so it has something that she has been very passionate about, and, and agrees, um, that something else needs to be done. So, we just wanted to get her thoughts, um, out on the table, too. But I'd like to hear, uh, from the rest of the board, you know, bring forth, um, last-minute questions or thoughts that you have, anything that you've heard from the community.
Yeah, yeah, the one thing that Brady, I, I've always liked to see when we, when we show charts, when we show, let's say, Dakota County, where does South St. Paul School District fall, you know, on, on that list, you know, with, with our levies and things like that, and how, how we're not even at the average? And then, when you look at the whole metropolitan area, you know, our school district, we're way almost to the bottom. We're number, like, thirty-four, I believe, out of the whole metropolitan state area. And I think showing those charts to the community is very, very eye-opening, and very passionate to us to help our kids, to, to boost our morale, to boost our staff, to, to show their support, and, and let them know how much we care, because we wanna keep everybody together and safe, and, and keep our buildings going, and with excellent education in, in staff. So, that's the one thing that I always look forward to seeing when we do presentations to the community for this event.
Yeah, but we'll have that information on our website.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And I'll phrase this as a question to Brady, but, um, what the board is voting on tonight is not a tax increase, because we do not have the authority, we're the only governmental agency that doesn't have the authority to, uh, raise or lower taxes. What we are voting on tonight is to present the question to the community for them to decide what they wanna do. You know, we can either continue on as we are, looking at the, the repercussions of not increasing the funding, as you had up on your slide, or to accept the, the proposals and provide more funding to the, the schools, so it's.
Great clarification.
Correct. Yep, you're creating, you're posing the question to the community.
Right.
For them to decide.
It's their decision, it's not the board's decision.
Correct.
Great. I think the important thing to, um, realize here is we're not asking for something we don't need. And the other thing that impressed me, Brady, was when you said, every dollar will be spent on education, and I think that deserves to be said again for somebody who may have missed it. But we're, we're not looking for something that our kids don't need at this point in time, so. And it's going in the right place, and, um, you know, I guess I'm done.
Great point.
I think to add to that bill, it's not just that every dollar is spent on education, it's spent on our kids, the ones that are inside our city. Um, and so, this is a problem we've been waiting for solutions for, and. And so this is a problem we've been waiting for solutions for, and those solutions aren't coming, so it's up to us to fix it. I think about my own daughter's journey through education, she's entering 10th grade, and in all 11 years that she has been in South St. Paul schools, at the end of every year, our school districts have been facing some level of massive budget cut. For 11 years, we've watched that get whittled away, which means our schools are a little bit less than when she started. And that, I think, is a really unfortunate place to be in, and our kids deserve a better picture than that. And we deserve to continue really strong programs for all of our students. And so really passionate about that and really passionate about a good quality education is the key to success in adulthood. And I think we deserve to give that to our community.
All right, so that is what's before us tonight. Thank you, Brady, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Lisa, you please call the roll.
Inspector Aaron.
What, what are we?
You're voting on the resolution to place two levy questions on the ballot.
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Absolutely, yes.
Inspector, Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector LaLaverde?
Yes.
Chair Diaz?
Yes.
That's six yeas.
That motion carries.
Just real quick, if I may, I know that was a lot of information we just shared with the public, so it will, we, we're holding. Until we know what the vote was, we will have our website updating momentarily. Please give us a few moments because it's hot out the presses, but again, I have to commend the team that's been working behind the scenes, preparing for that. So we'll continue to have more information there on informational meetings and things that we still have to put on the calendars, just having waited to hear that. So again, the website for now will be a great source of information and we'll, we'll continue to get, as Inspector Felton said, you know, information out to folks to help them really understand where we're at and help make that decision at that time.
Danette, if you're watching, it's a goal. All right, next up on our business items is, I'm looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the proposed 2023 health dental and ancillary insurance premiums. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, and we do have Joel Miltier here, Finance Director, to give us a little background on that.
Great, thank you very much. A little bit of background, this is our annual review of our 2023 health insurance, dental insurance, and ancillary insurance premiums and rates that we have for our staff in the school district. And as we move forward, I just want to remind the school board that we are a self-funded insurance program, meaning that we pay for our own insurance expenses through the premiums paid by our members in the school district. So I am pleased to announce that for the third year running, and I believe it is the seventh year running for dental insurance, but third year for health insurance, that we are recommending a 0% increase to the insurance rates for our staff in the school district. This is just an awesome thing as we move forward, we look at our recruiting and retention efforts in the school district and being able to offer insurance rates that we can to our staff and not have these premium increases each year for them. So we're hoping to be able to continue to do that in the future. It will, of course, all depend on how we're able to continue to manage that self-fund, but we hope that we'll continue to do that strongly as we have these past few years. And so we're looking for your support tonight as we move forward for these insurance rates for the 2023.
Great, thanks, Joel.
I gave you this compliment during our committee, the whole meeting, but I also think it's worth saying again, it's a remarkable achievement. I work in schools and in districts across the metro area. Most staff in the next week or two are being presented their benefits, and it is somewhere between an eight and a 25% increase to their insurance. So I think that's really remarkable, we can do that for our staff.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
It's a resolution.
Thank you.
All righty, last thing on our agenda, our informational reports from the board members. We'll start down here with.
My name's.
Mr. Aaron. I needed to see your face when you looked up the case.
I think it's just an exciting time of year and, you know, I think everybody's chomping at the bit to get back to what we consider to be normal now. So, you know, I, I will be 100% back when I get to take my grandson to the first home football game against Tartan. And I'm looking forward to it, and we're, we're two weeks away, but I think it's just an energy-packed time of year, and I can't wait for school to start, and I never said that while I was in school, but I, I can say it now.
Great, thank you.
I'm just excited for the beginning of the year as well, so that's it, that's all I got.
Yeah.
We've been busy.
You have been busy. Thank you.
You know, nothing, nothing at this time.
Great. Mr. Walker.
Just the same as what we've heard so far, it's an exciting time, I'm glad to be a part of it, you know, the, the school board election to have 22 candidates come forward for the four positions. I can remember eight years ago when there were three people that filed for the four positions, which took us to a whole different level of things that needed to happen. And then just the, the presentations from the building staff, the principals tonight, about everything that's going on and just the buzz around the school year starting, it's a, it's a fun time to be involved with the schools, so that's it.
Yeah, I just want to put a thank you out to the community. Several of us board members attended the South St. Paul Resource Fair, which was held last weekend at Capoja Education Center, and it was, it was a really nice event. Also, thank you to the Lions Club for being there and providing hot dogs, hamburgers, a bunch of snacks. It was really good, and a huge thank you to all of our staff members that attended, activity personnel, athletic personnel, and a lot of community representatives also. So we thank them for, for having the resource fair, that was something new for the community. And it's been mentioned a couple times already tonight, with our fall activities and athletics starting up, we look forward next week, our first football game. It is an away game at St. Thomas Academy on Thursday, the first, our first home game, which will be Saturday, the 10th. As Bill mentioned, we're playing Tartan. It is at 12 o'clock in the afternoon on a Saturday. And I also look forward to our soccer teams, the boys and the girls. The, the boys' first soccer team is this Thursday, it is an away game, though it's at Johnson High School in St. Paul. And their first home game will be a week from tonight, Monday, they'll be playing Como Park at the high school at 5 o'clock. And then the girls', their first home game will be next week also, on the 30th. They'll be playing St. Croix Prep Academy at 5 o'clock at, at the high school, so we look forward to that. And as was mentioned earlier, tonight was the first girls' tennis team, and they won on the way driving down here tonight. When I drove down Fifth Avenue, I, I seen the girls were playing, there was a large, large crowd there supporting the tennis team. So thank you very much, and congratulations to the girls. And as we know, our activity is, one of my favorite activities is the high school theater program, because I, I love musicals. So this fall, it will be Little Shop of Horrors. And the auditions for that play will be starting on Wednesday, September 7th, at, at the high school with Mr. Holson. So there will be information posted on their bulletin boards for everyone who's interested in being in that. And it's for, for grades six through 12 at the high school, Little Shop of Horrors musical, which, which is a lot of fun, which will be presented in November. And also, as I am the representative of the Education Foundation, a couple things, events coming up, as you know, the Walk-a-thon, which is held each year as a fundraiser, will be held on September 21st. So students in the buildings will be getting the information in, in about three weeks so that they can, you know, raise funds to help support the foundation. And another thing that's very important, as you know, Carrie Boivich, you know, she, she is our former director there, received a wonderful $50,000 gift from a member of our support there as an endowment of arts. And the foundation is accepting a matching grant. If anyone is interested in the community donating to the foundation to help match that grant at, at the Education Foundation. So that's really, really looking forward to that. And also, as you know, I, I am the South St. Paul representative to Intermediate School 917, located down in Rosemont at DCTC. Our 917 is, is our program that helps to serve special needs students and career and tech opportunities. So that will be starting up too, you know, in, in two weeks, that program. And I am very fortunate this year, I get to be attending the Association of Educational Services Agency, which is, which is an annual conference held. It's, well, this year it's held at the very end of November and the first day or two in December. So it will be, it is a really wonderful event to attend conference, learning about a lot of social agencies literally around the country. So it's, it's very, very important event. There are four members of us that will be attending that event. And we also have an, an event coming up in St. Paul. It's at the Minnesota Humanities Center, which is located near Phalen Park in St. Paul, which will include, it's, it's the end of October on the 25th. It will be, Dr. Zambrino and I will be attending that, and what it, what it is, it involves all, all the superintendents that, that are members of Intermediate 917 and their board members will be attending this annual meeting. And it's a, it's a very nice event held with, with the large group of people. So really look forward to that, so there's be a lot of, a lot of good things coming up this fall. And of course, we look forward to school starting in two weeks and wish everyone a, a safe Labor Day and have fun, so thank you.
Thank you. So that's it for tonight's agenda, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our Monday, August 22nd, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Fantastic. Any discussion? No. That motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned at?
7:04.
7:04 PM. Thank you.